A lot about our school board candidates. Um, we are looking for an informative and lively discussion and it's my pleasure at this time to introduce Caroline Clark, who will moderate for tonight. Caroline's been a civil rights attorney in the area for over eighteen years and she's had a host of very interesting cases that she's where she's advocated, taken an anti racism stance and advocated for children and others of disadvantage. So having said that, I'm going to introduce Caroline. Caroline, thank you. It's our honor to have you as our moderator tonight and I will mute so that we won't have the feedback. Candidates, I'll just remind you, there's ninety seconds when Caroline asks you a question. I'll be the timekeeper and I will just give you a signal when the ninety seconds are up. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the Princeton Parents for Black Children Board of Education Candidates Forum. Um, I'm gonna take a minute or two to review the guidelines for engagement tonight. I will introduce the four candidates and I will read their respective bios. After that, each candidate will get ninety seconds to make an opening statement. Mary will be the timekeeper. I will then follow with a series of questions to ask of the specific candidates. Each candidate will have sixty seconds to respond. At the close of the question and answer session, each candidate will then have sixty seconds to make a final statement, which should include your rebuttal if you have any. We ready to go? Okay, so I'll quickly um read a bio. Um, I would like to stay at the beginning, the candidates, you all submitted your bios. I did take the liberty of shortening some of them in the interest of time. So I'll start with Ms. Bronfeld. Debbie Bronfeld is running for her third term as Princeton, as a Princeton School Board member. She has lived in Princeton for over twenty years and both her boys were educated at Littlebrook, Princeton Middle School and Princeton High School, graduating in twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen. The first half of her career was in corporate America, working at manufacturing companies, doing accounting, logistics and inventory management. She then moved to the nonprofit world as an employee and always as a volunteer. She is currently on the Board of the Princeton Mobile Food Pantry and volunteers with Housing Initiative of Princeton. She has had the honor of being one of the school board member for the last six years representing you and your children. During her tenure, Ms. Bronfield served on the operations, student achievement, personnel, chair and equity committees. So she understands how the district functions. She pledges to continue to speak her mind in support of all students. Ms. Cantor. Susan Cantor moved to Princeton almost twenty-five years ago and her three children all attended Princeton Public Schools K through twelve. Her background as a vice president of operations with over twenty years of experience in charge of budgeting and projections, as well as her experience on several local nonprofit boards, uh, have broadly prepared her to serve on the Princeton Public School Board. However, Ms. Cantor believes it's her work as a longtime parent teacher organization volunteer, especially as a Princeton High School PTO president for seven years, that really sparked her passion to run for a first term three year, three years ago. As a parent volunteer on the Bell Committee, which changed the start time and schedule at Princeton High School in order to promote the health and wellness of our students, Ms. Cantor saw what the administration staff and a supportive and engaged board could achieve when they put their social and when they put the social emotional needs of students first. Her first term was dominated by issues around COVID and she is now excited to support the district to finally make meaningful and measurable changes so our students are supported to reach their potential and feel that school is both a welcoming and safe environment. Uh, Ms. Kendall. Daphna Kendall and her family moved to Princeton in twenty eleven. Her son graduated from Princeton High School in twenty twenty-two and her daughter is in tenth grade at Princeton High School. Ms. Kendall has six years of experience on the Board of Education and has held many leadership, leadership positions, including president and vice president. And has served on every Board of Education Committee. She earned a Bachelor's of Arts from Lehigh University and a Juris Doctorate from Seton Hall Law. Ms. Daphna is running again to focus on access and programming, educational excellence and carefully managing property taxes. And last but not least, Ms. Lisa Wu. Ms. Wu was born in Taiwan and has been living in Princeton since twenty fifteen. She has two daughters and a son, as well as three grandkids. Ms. Wu is running on a platform of take back pride. She believes the Princeton School District must focus on students getting real education, not ideology, and that the Board of Education should have a policy of openness and fiscal responsibility. Ms. Wu is promoting unity for all. She asked that we please understand that English is not her first language and she asked uh, for me to pass on her blessings for you and your families. Let's jump in. So my first question is posed to all the candidates. Given the Board of Education's ongoing strategic. I apologize. Ms. Wu, I believe that's you. Would you mute? Are you mute now? Okay. Okay, the first question is posed to all candidates. Given the Board of Education's ongoing strategic planning process and the district's stated priority of equity, what does achieving equity, inclusion and accessibility for black and brown and brown students in Princeton Public Schools mean to you? Please provide specific solutions and whether you believe equity, inclusion and accessibility should be a priority or whether you believe it is harmful to white students. Okay, uh, let's start with you, Ms. Bronfeld.
Okay, um. I'm sorry, was that number nine?
I, I think that was.
No, it's question six, right? Okay, alright. Sorry, I thought they got combined, sorry. Um, I believe a free and equitable education should be the priority of the district. Again, one size of education does not fit every student. But as a public school in a diverse community, which I am proud to not only live in, but to serve on the board, I strongly support and believe equity, inclusion and accessibility must be a priority for all our students. How we get there is pushing our black and brown students to excel in classes, pushing them to try accelerated and AP classes and making sure they have the supports they need, which could include a scientific calculator. Having guidance meet with our students to hear what they are interested in and also to hear about any baggage that they may be carrying. Being flexible with our students is an example, if the student needs to babysit siblings after school, then seeing if we can do tutoring after dinner. Listening and working and knowing our students will help them excel because they won't feel alone. And if students want to attend college, making sure they meet all the requirements, can sign up for tests and if funds are needed to pay, that the district looks for ways for this to happen versus this being a roadblock for students. We should not have to have our students always asking for help. We need to know who our students are and know what they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bronfeld. Um, would Ms. Cantor um like to answer that question next?
Yes, uh, number one, I thought Debbie gave a really uh well-informed answer, but I'll, I'll speak to more. I think it's better for all students when we um provide access and equitable access for all of our students to both participate and achieve. And that sometimes may require more support. It may be required flexibility in scheduling and timing, but this is something that we um as a district need to support. And I know that our board is very anxious as the strategic plan is finished to begin that work uh to be able to both in budget and uh other ways support um access to our students. This has been an issue for decades that has not been able to be achieved by the Princeton Public Schools and it is a reason that I initially ran. Obviously, the pandemic kind of diverted some of our focuses and acts equitable access to online learning became a focus. Um, which as we know was still rather difficult. The pandemic uh certainly hurt um students more who did not have equitable access to internet uh and time and focus to be able to learn. So I think coming out of the strategic plan, it is best for all of our students if we focus on creating this accessibility for those who have had the most difficulty in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Um, uh, Ms. Kendall?
Thank you, and thank you for hosting this forum. Um, it's very um important to have these conversations. Um, so thank you all for your time in organizing this. And so I'll just say, um, our school district has an obligation to every child and our mission is that every child has the opportunity uh to succeed and live a lot, a life of joy and purpose. And consistently, as Susan mentioned, we have not um been meeting um the needs of um certain children, um, children of color, uh, children of special needs, children of low economic uh status. And so when we look at how we are going to focus the next five years, you know, this is a very important thing to focus on. So back in um twenty seventeen, I think we commissioned an equity audit and equity audit said, you know, um, black and brown kids are disciplined at higher rates than their peers. I mean, nothing was surprising, right? But it, 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 it codified it. Black and brown kids are disciplined at a higher rate than their um uh white peers. Um, they are not represented adequately in higher level courses, right? So now we move to, we're in twenty twenty-two now. What's changed? Well, I think what's a little, so first of all, we're talking about it. When I first joined the board in twenty sixteen, we weren't talking about it. We track now on our suspension reports, our HIV reports, um, who's suspended, but we also know their race, their gender, and whether or not they're classified for special education services or have a five oh four plan. So that's important too. And I have to tell you, I believe we've made a difference in the discipline of black and brown kids. Am I done? I am. Can I finish my sentence? Because I think administrators know that when they bring this to the board and they're suspending black and brown kids, we're gonna push back. And so I have seen a decline. Um, and you know, that's the entire board is focusing on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Wu? Ms. Wu? Um, let me just take a quick minute um as we wait to see if Ms. Wu will um join us on the line. Um, I just wanted you all to know that um Rita couldn't make it here today. She had a family emergency this morning and so she sends her apologies. Okay, Ms. Wu? Okay, um, I will move on to the next question. Um, and the next question is directed to Ms. Cantor and Ms. Bronfeld. Last year, there was a lot of misinformation and racially charged comments about district leadership circulated amongst a small group of parents and used to ignite strong feelings. What will you do as a Board of Education member to stand up to those who fuel misinformation, even if they are prominent members of the community and ensure that accurate information is shared broadly? Um, Ms. Cantor, would you like to go first?
Um, I obviously will speak in generalities because I'm not sure exactly, you know, which particular um issue might be referring, but I think it's always important as a board member to ensure that the district uh is one of providing accurate information and is aware when uh parents particularly feel that they are, are spreading inaccurate information. So my first step is always to go back to the superintendent um to say that we've heard things uh in town that perhaps won't be accurate and perhaps you need to provide another form of communication. Um, the other way is our board works, our board president uh often speaks for our board. We don't speak as individuals. So we also, I would uh contact the board president and the last year that's been Daphna has been uh very helpful in these areas. Um, you know, it is our job as district leaders to make sure that um there is accurate and uh not harmful uh information being spread. So, you know, it is, I don't care who is spreading it, whether it is a prominent or I, you know, I don't even define that, but whoever is uh speaking to inaccuracies about our district, I, it's important to correct it as quickly as possible, obviously.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Ms. Bronfeld?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to share what I read at our board meeting on May tenth about this issue. Um, I've been a member of the Personnel Committee for five of my six years on the board. The personnel meetings are always closed to the public. This is because we discuss confidential and personal information about district staff, just like HR in a corporate environment. Each board member when elected pledges to follow strict duties and procedures. We re-pledge every year. There are many school board rules, regulations and policies that we must legally follow. This includes keeping personal information private and confidential. Our school boards, like all New Jersey school boards, are governed by the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, also referred to as the Sunshine Law. And this is again from that letter from everything we got in May. It was very hard reading the many letters I received from the public this past spring. The way many of the letters went after Dr. Kelly was unacceptable to me. Dr. Kelly is the leader of our district. Being a woman in power is hard enough. Being a black woman in power is even harder. And Dr. Kelly was attacked for doing her job. The job that the school board hired her to do. She was approved ten to zero to become the Princeton Public School Superintendent. Not an easy community to work in and not an easy district to lead. The board tried to share the facts with the community, like we're not getting rid of calculus, like we're not taking away APs and we are not, I repeat, not taking friends' funds from the research classes. But members of the community kept repeating what was not true. I will stand up by sharing the truth and supporting the leadership that I feel is best for PPS. I will end by saying, you know, Princeton Public School personnel issues are confidential. They're shared with the superintendent, the board, HR and individuals. So I read this because I was really distraught at the attack on.
Ms. Bronfeld, you're out of time.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, can I speak? This is Lisa.
Hi, Ms. Wu, welcome back.
I'm so sorry, okay, because I'm in Princeton library and I borrowed the laptop, so I'm not used to, so I apologize. I can see you guys, but I cannot, you know, join you and I apologize, okay? So can I have my open statement? Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Uh, my name is Lee Shun Tung. I was born in Taiwan. I immigrated forty-eight years ago. I have three kids, two daughters.
I apologize, Ms. Wu. I actually already read your bio. I thought you had something else to say. I apologize. The bio you submitted, I did in fact read.
Okay, so.
Well, actually, the next question was going to be yours. So I'm, I'm glad you came in. So the third question is Princeton Public School has made strides in hiring black administrators and teachers for the upper grades, but there is still lower representation among during the crucial elementary school years. Do you believe this should be a priority for Princeton Public School? Why or why not?
I, I. You can see that I am Asian American, so I always colorblind. I always go for to hire the best quality that the district can find. I would never discriminate against any race. So may best qualify people to have that job. Okay, and maybe I don't make my scale because English is not my first language. You have to excuse me, but I do have a passion to serve my community. And whatever the hiring processing, we have to go through the step and ask for expert's opinion. But may the best qualified people get the job. That is my opinion. I never go any race. That doesn't concern me. I'm a colorblind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I, I have a quick follow-up for you. So if we have two very qualified candidates and one is of African descent and the other is not, would you support the hiring of the African, uh, the teacher of African descent so that we can have a diversified um and, and representation um in the African-American community?
Yes, I will. I will approve and I will go along with that. If that help ease the racial tension, I will answer your question. Hire African-American teacher.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Ms. Kendall, would you answer that question for me, please?
Sure, um. Uh, well, absolutely. I think we have um one African-American elementary school teacher now. Um, and you know, it's important for children. Um, I'm just like stunned by Ms. Wu's comment because in another forum, uh, she was uh decidedly, um, she asked us um what we could do to stop Dr. Kelly for hiring so many black people. And unfortunately, um, we need to shine a light on some of uh this disgusting things that we've seen this election season and that's one of them. And since Ms. Wu is here, she can, you know, um, speak to that, should she choose. Um, so I, I apologize. Um, but yes, I think we need to do a better job at the elementary grades. Kids need to see um needs to see reflections of themselves in, in the staff. So yes, I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. The, the fourth question is um again for you, Ms. Wu and Ms. Kendall. Prior to this election cycle, what is your record of community involvement and volunteer? Student equity or achievement have you attended or participated in? If you've not participated in these committees, why or why not? Ms. Kendall, would you go first for me?
Sure, I'd be happy to go first. Um, so I began, um, I came to, we started at Littlebrook in twenty eleven. Um, I participated in the PTO. Um, I was one of the co-founders of Princeton Children's Fund, which works to ensure that all kids have access to equitable opportunities. Um, I'm currently on the Board of the Princeton Mobile Food Pantry, which um seeks to help food insecure families in Princeton. Um, I have, I coached my daughter's softball team. Um, and then I've been on the board uh for two terms, twenty sixteen to eighteen and twenty twenty to present. And like I said earlier, or you said in my statement, I've served on every uh Board of Education Committee. Um, I co-founded the Equity Committee with Betsy Baglio and we both served as the first um co-chairs. I have been on student achievement, I think, for, for five years and uh the Equity Committee every year I've been on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Ms. Wu? Would you answer that question for me? Thank you.
I actually spent thirty-five years living in uh Southern California between LA County and Orange County. I raised three uh children. They all went through public school system. And uh not in this community because I moved to New Jersey eleven years ago. And just uh came to my attention that I wanna do something for my community this year and my friend asked me to run the Board of Education so I can serve my community. So not in this school district, but I did involve in Irvine, California, which is also a college town. And it's, I reside there twenty years. So I have an experience involved with teacher and school and the personnel. Uh, but I cannot say that I have involved a volunteer in Princeton per se. Thank you very much.
Uh, Ms. Wu, I have a, a quick follow-up for you. Um, just for clarification for um all of our, uh, all of your um uh other candidates, for all the other candidates, as well as the, the parents who are um listening in. Would you define for me, when you say your community, what exactly um you mean by that?
No, I mean, I spent twenty-plus years living in Irvine.
Understood.
Yes, and I raised three children, went through public school system, all in Irvine. And I volunteer, but it's in the Irvine School District. But the public school is public school and I do experience that's what you're asking.
That's not actually what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, what is your community? Are you referring to your physical site as in Princeton? Is that the community to which you're referring or are you referring to your racial community? Or your racial community in that you are a woman of Asian descent and you are representing that community?
I'm talking about Princeton community. I never identify only Asian-American. I'm American first. Thank you very much. So my community is Irvine. Entire community. Thank you for asking me again. Clarify that.
No problem. Thank you. Okay. The fifth question is for all the candidates. Princeton Public School has in previous years clearly failed black children. For example, eighty-seven percent of white graduates entered four-year colleges last year, while only fifty percent of black graduates entered four-year colleges. Are you in favor of the new superintendent's efforts to improve equity and reduce the achievement opportunity gap in the district? And if so, how do you intend to support those efforts publicly and through board policy? As for all the candidates, so um, let's start with Ms. Bronfeld.
Can you repeat? I guess, I guess I'm all of, can you repeat it? I'm sorry.
As in previous years clearly failed black children. For example, eighty-seven percent of white graduates entered four-year colleges last year, while only fifty percent of black graduates entered four-year colleges. Are you in favor of the new superintendent's efforts to improve equity and reduce the achievement opportunity gap in the district? If yes, how do you intend to support those efforts publicly and through board policy?
Thank you, thank you. I completely um support Dr. Kelly in helping reduce the uh achievement and opportunity gap for our black and brown children. I mean, one of the biggest reasons I was so impressed with her and really wanted her to be our superintendent is a lot of the work that she did in her prior district. You know, that I felt she could bring here and help us. And like my colleagues have said, we, we haven't done a great job. We really haven't. The equity report that came out was extremely eye-opening to me and, you know, kind of very sad too when I heard, you know, how parents and staff felt. So I will, you know, support, you know, what she needs and, you know, a lot of what we've done is in the summer, we've offered additional summer classes so we can help a lot of our students enter into APs during the um school year. So, you know, just to give them a little, you know, bump in knowing what's coming and just a little extra education. So my goal is for everyone to go off and, you know, do college if that's what they want to do and um, or we do have, you know, our technical schools too, where you can go to high school. And, um, or we do have, you know, our technical schools too, where you can go to high school in the AM and technical in the afternoon. But I support her and, you know, some of our policies are written that they don't, you know, approve or, or, or follow all this. I would definitely work and sit with our, you know, policy committee to make sure that we have policies. We, we, you know, for me, everybody deserves a free and equitable education. And that's the biggest reason I went into running for the school board. I, I truly believe that I'm a product of public education myself and.
Education. You're over time.
Ms. Cantor, would you answer that? Thank you, Ms. Bronfeld.
Uh, yes, I think, um, our, our board and myself, uh, a hundred percent support, um, Dr. Kelly in her initiatives to, uh, begin making, uh, changes in how our district, uh, supports equity. Um, the strategic plan, uh, will be the first step toward that by creating actual measurables and real changes. I think, you know, since I've been involved in the district, you know, we've done some good things. We've done surveys and we've had a lot of good talk, but I'm not sure we always had, uh, the results that we want to see. So to actually have someone that came in, that comes to us and is used to looking at the data, analyzing it and creating supports to make change, I think is, uh, something very valuable that, uh, Dr. Kelly brings to us to, um, to help, you know, start to make inroads into this, uh, problem that's plagued our district for, for so long. So like it, it's definite, it, it's so exciting and I look forward, um, to that, to, to be able to support, um, her and our entire staff as we really try to, um, move the ball, um, and create those opportunities, supports, and, um, that allow all of our students to, to reach, uh, but are black or brown or under, uh, students with, uh, who've had IEPs and disabilities who may not have had that equitable access that we all, um, want. And I know another thing as a district, Dr. Kelly is very supportive of increasing our, our pre-K for underserved and that, and that's a great place for us to start with, um, to, to, for the support before, right before, right when they enter the district.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Um, Ms. Kendall?
Uh, thank you. So first I'd like to say, so I have, um, uh, my son has, uh, has, was in special education his entire public education experience. And when he was in third grade here in Princeton, um, someone very high up in the district said, well, county college isn't, isn't out of the question for him. And I think county college is great, especially, um, if, if that's what someone wants. But we shouldn't be setting, um, ceilings like that when, for a nine-year-old. And so, um, it was very, you know, having a child with disability, I mean, he's white. Um, and maybe you got to talk to him for five seconds before you realized that he had a disability. Um, but I, I learned it, it really opened my eyes in that when you're black, um, you don't even get that, those five seconds and the expectations are lowered. Um, and so when my son was nine years old, you know, I realized that I had to take control of his educational experience. Long story, he's in college now, um, and he got four full academic scholarships to college. Um, and when, and I have to tell you, when he first got his first acceptance, he couldn't believe it was real. And he said, I ca, I guess I'm gonna, I'm really gonna go to college. And that conversation when he was nine years old stuck with him. And so my goal for kids like him, black and brown kids, special ed kids, we should not be setting ceilings. The sky should be the limit. And if additional supports are needed, we should provide them. And I just want to say the one thing, Dr. Kelly, I know I talk too much, but Dr. Kelly, the one thing she's done that no one's done, she brought in, um, very soon, um, in her tenure, an elementary education supervisor. And when we talk about closing the achievement gap, we need to look at those elementary grades because that's where the magic is going to happen, where those kids are not going to be disproportionately classified for special ed, but instead get the interventions they need. Because once, uh, I'll stop, I'll talk later. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Ms. Wu?
Yes. I was wondering if everybody agree with the report or the number that pretty much is the indictment for the incumbent of the BOE? Because the three incumbent, there's a two turn. Two member, they had two turn on their back. One has a one turn, three years. But, uh, I would agree, not everybody is college-bound material. I actually suggest we should emphasize and the vocation training, technical training. So the student, they not necessarily would go to the college or university. They can have intensive training so they are ready for employment bands. I thought that should be also looked at, not just focus only, um, academic. Because I, education is not one size fits all. My parents, they both educated in Taiwan. They both teacher in college.
Ms. Wu, you're out of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. The next question, excuse me, is also posed to all the candidates. Um, in 2020, 2021, interim superintendent Barry Galasso ordered a review of the Princeton Public School Math Curriculum for Compliance with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. This review revealed that curriculum guides were unclear, that the middle school curriculum improperly combines standards from grades six, seven, and eighth in various misnamed algebra courses without careful regard for scope and sequence, that the pre-algebra course set is incoherent and needs a complete review of scope and sequence, that the middle school courses are mislabeled, that the fourth grade content is not properly aligned with New Jersey Student Learning Standards, and that the math curriculum is lacking in many areas. Prior to the current administration, the Princeton culture has been to accelerate students under parent pressure without regard for students' abilities and readiness. What will be your position and role as a board member to correct the curriculum and ensure that what is taught in the classroom is aligned with the curriculum as well as address parental pressure to accelerate children despite their readiness? And this is for all the candidates. Ms. Wu, I'll start with you.
Again, I think this is pretty much safe for the incumbent. They did not leave the job. And twenty, twenty to twenty twenty-one, that's a current. Well, that's last year. And I always would go to the state guideline and mandatory and follow their recommendation. And that would not be happening. But I don't know when you mentioned that is uh, due to a small group, they, uh, school district have big pressure, under pressure. So allow them. Again, that is the leadership in question. So I still want to say that's indictment of the incumbent. Thank you very much. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Uh, Ms. Kendall?
So, you know, we know Ms. Tidwell, uh, joined the just, the math supervisor, joined the district in 2019, right before the pandemic. And so right away, she said that we're not teaching, like what we're teaching in seventh grade is, is in algebra and, and this and that. And that we need to realign the curriculum, which is why they did the, the little review. And, um, so the reason, and our test scores just came out, and in the middle school math, they're not great. And that's because the curriculum is not aligned to what's being taught on the test. So absolutely, we have to, um, modify the curriculum a hundred percent. Um, and, and actually at the last board meeting, we approved, um, a new, um, an RFP for a new review, um, a more, because what was done before was just a compar, oh, like a tiny review and we're looking for a more comprehensive review of the math and the science programs. With regard to kid, to, to parents excelling, I mean, math is very important in this community. And I don't know what the, I, 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 I don't, you know, my, my kids will, um, you know, they'll, they'll go through high school, they'll take calculus and, and they'll move on. And I think they'll live very good lives. But for some people, it's very important that their kids, um, are taking classes at the university. And again, our, our goal is that all kids live, reach, you know, live lives of joy and per, of purpose. And if math is part of that purpose, we have an obligation to those students as well, but not at the expense of, of curriculum or anything like that. So, um, I think we need to better codify how we allow people to accelerate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Ms. Cantor?
Uh, yes. Um, number one, I thought we got a very comprehensive, you summarized very comprehensively, um, in detail, the review that we received with, um, the limitations. And I was really pleased to be able to approve an RFP to begin the formal review of our math curriculum. Um, another thing that I've always said, I'll, uh, add on to what Daphna said in terms of, uh, parents pushing their kids ahead. I've always said that one reason for that is because we don't have great appropriate enrichment materials available. And so parents feel that they need to, uh, push their kids ahead and ahead. And, um, I look forward in that review for that to be addressed as well, as well as we develop more supports. Um, you know, our past superintendent Barry Galasso always said, if you're, if we have a child in the district and in four years they're not at grade level, then we're not doing our job. And I think that's a, a good goal for us, um, to have for all of our students. Um, and I believe that, um, a realignment that, uh, Ms. Tidwell, uh, Dr. Two and Dr. Kelly, uh, I believe they will come back to us, uh, with a plan that addresses some of these, uh, inconsistencies in our math program.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Ms. Bronfeld?
Yes, thank you. Um, just to add a little bit more, yes, we did approve an RFP and the RFP is also going to be to review science. And just so everyone knows, we also, we do a lot of reviews on our departments. Every, you know, every year we're reviewing some of the curriculum. So it's not out of the question. Math obviously has been a real hot topic. Um, so we need to do one. And this is the best step for the district to take to do this. Like I was saying, math has been a hot topic for a long time. And unfortunately, the prior superintendent, Steve Cochran, didn't like to make waves or deal with controversial issues. And this is partly why nothing has been done in several years. And the math supervisor, to be fair, Ms. Tidwell wasn't around much. So families were left up to their kind of own, you know, advice to figure out what they wanted and to push on things like that. Um, the prior math culture was only good for those who knew how to play the system. And that is why I'm a hundred percent supportive of us doing a real review on math and science. And Dr. Kelly and Dr. Two saw that there was a problem and, and brought this to us and said they wanted to move forward. And, you know, we're still pushing back on this narrative that we're getting rid of calculus. So we are moving ahead. We are going to do this review. We're going to share it, you know, with the community and everything. But it's, it, it, it's hard when you keep getting these roadblocks of like, you're still getting rid of calculus. You're still getting rid of calculus. And, and we are not, but my kids both love math and my younger one took every math class he could find, but he's one of those kids. But, but we need math for everybody and I've always enjoyed math too. So I, we know that we need to.
Bronfeld? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bronfeld. Um, in the interest of time, we're going to, um, we will not be able to answer all of the questions. So I'm going to jump to, um, the eighth question and I'm going to ask, um, Ms. Kendall, Ms. Wu and Ms. Cantor to, um, answer. According to Princeton Public School Special Education reviewed, review performed by Public Consulting Group, black students were over identified for special needs. Black students were twice as likely as the general population to be identified as having health impairment, specific learning disability and speech or language impairments. In fact, the district has been aware that fifty percent of its black students were classified. Over fifty percent of those students were classified for behavioral reasons such as emotional regulation. Finally, black students have the lowest rate of inclusion in the general population. Why does this occur? Who is responsible for this disproportionate referral and the lack of oversight for special education services? And what plans do you have to change this dynamic? Okay? Um, I will start with Ms. Kendall.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, I mean, that's one of the things that really jumped out when I read the special report. We have twenty kids in the district who are classified for emotional regulation and ten of them are black. Um, ten of those are black. When black kids represent five percent of our population. So to me, I mean, I'm not an expert, um, but it says to me that someone might not have the behavior that is, um, you know, uh, the, a teacher is not, is using behavior to get the child out of their class. And so one of the things that was supposed to happen in the special education report was that it was supposed to, we were supposed to get more of a breakdown on where these referrals are happening. Like, is it a specific teacher, right? And unfortunately, the pandemic happened and I think that the scope of the, um, report changed. But, you know, that's something that we need to look at. Again, we hired, um, a new supervisor of elementary education. And that's her job is to see what is going on in each of the four elementary schools. She goes to each one every week. Um, I'm sorry, every day of the week, she goes to a different elementary school and she's there and she's working with the kids. And so now before, I would hope before someone is classified, they're sitting down with, um, the supervisor. Her name is Ms. Moore and she has a background in special education. And they're, they're trying other interventions as opposed to classifying a child, um, early, so early on in their career. And, you know, studies show that when kids are classified that early, you are, you know, really ruining their lifetime earning potentials, their self-esteem and everything else. So, okay, but we are look, taking, making progress on that, I believe, finally.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Ms. Cantor?
Um, I'll add on to what, um, Daphna said. Um, I know one of Dr. Kelly's priorities this year, we might even call it a goal, is to make sure that all four of the, our elementary schools, that their early, um, education, that these programs are standardized between the four schools and that we're using best practices in order to, um, start to, um, to fix this problem and to, uh, make sure that, um, no school, that every school is following the best of our practices. And she's using data to keep track of this so that we can, uh, find where there, there's anomalies in the situation. And the other thing, um, as I mentioned earlier, that I'm really excited about is our pre-K program where we received a presentation about, um, how well the students that started in this program after one year, that, how well they, um, they, uh, did in this one year of, of preschool programming. And I am hopeful as well that this will avoid this over-classification that, um, is something that when it happens, uh, it's something you probably can't ever, uh, get over. So to, to stop it happening in the first place is, is the key, uh, point. And I think that will be a great factor to lead to greater success in our students in our district.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Ms. Wu?
Again, that's not a failed leadership example. I think we should always early detect a student behavior problem. Communication, I think it's a very important communication between teacher and parents. And teacher with the school personnel or the student with the teacher, we have to identify early sign. and we have help the student as possible that we can because that uh, students welfare is priority. That's more important than anything else. So we have to identify as early as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. The next question is actually for you again, Ms. Wu. You have previously stated that we must focus on students getting real education, not ideology. Please elaborate. Define what you consider to be real education versus ideology. What are your thoughts on whether our district teaches more ideology than real education? And please provide us with some examples. Thank you.
To me, real education is always to teach students the critical thinking with the open mind to discuss both side of issue. But don't forget, we also need the basic education, which is reading, math, science. Because even the student, they are not going to college directly. They still have to be able to read. Otherwise, they cannot gain employment. About that ideology is I do not agree that try to forcing equal outcome artificially. And then also pushing to achieve gender identification and trans agenda, but not concern the age appropriate. That is, some student is too young to know. Like say, third grade. I think that is pushed, pushed to, too low. Because the state mandate is for secondary edge, uh, level, not K through five, five. Thank you very much. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Uh, the next question is for Ms. Bronfeld and Ms. Cantor. Currently, the board is engaged in strategic planning. Excuse me. As part of that process, the board is determining what the profiles of a Princeton High School graduate should be to determine budget priorities. So far, the strategic plan draft indicates that the board believes that the graduate should be joyful learners. How will targeting this characteristic, characteristic help black and brown graduates leave Princeton High School with a plan best suited to their personal goals and aspirations? And what budgetary decisions would you make to make our children joyful? You could go first, uh, Ms. Bronfeld.
Okay, thank you. Um, first, being a joyful student does not mean you will not be prepared, prepared for the workforce or higher education. Per the um, Webster dictionary, the meaning of joyful is happy. It is not an either or answer. And you can be joyful and excel, then, and excel at school and move on to the workforce. But not being joyful doesn't, isn't a huge burden on a student. We know that COVID really affected our students' mental health and well-being. This is evident everywhere and is causing some students to struggle in school and life. Our students are having a hard time socializing at recess after spending so much time behind a computer. Stress and joy might be opposites. So focusing on reducing stress for our students would be a first step. I don't feel adding joyful as a characteristic of a PH graduate takes away from anything else the district is focused on in terms of academics and extracurriculars and sports and arts for our students. And honestly, if we were all a little more joyful, our world might be a better place to live in. Some budgetary decisions might be to have more extracurricular for black and brown students that they enjoy. Maybe more open participatory, participatory programs like soccer or music or basketball court time. The board has put funds towards mental health support. And I will continue to approve funding for mental health and wellness and along the way for joyfulness. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cantor?
When I decided to run for the board, uh, one of my great motivations was that um, I saw that our kids uh, were so unhappy, certain groups were so unhappy with their experience at school, that they didn't feel supported. They didn't feel themselves in the curriculum. They um, didn't um, see them, they didn't find going to school joyful, creating an absenteeism that issue that we've been dealing with. So for me, using the word joyful means that school should be a place where they feel supported, where they feel welcome, where they feel seen, where they, where they feel um, like a place they want to be and that a place they know is going to help them achieve the goals that they want to have. And that was probably one of my biggest motivations in running for the board to ensure that, that this, that a group of students would feel that the school is a place that is a positive experience for them. Not a place where they experienced microaggressions, not a place where they felt that um, people didn't want them to succeed. Um, you know, so, so to me, I agree um, in what, with what Debbie said, joyful and being a great learner are not mutually exclusive. I want our kids to, to see, to know that when they're learning, they, they're just excited. You want them to have that coming off the bus in kindergarten feeling, this is what I did today, wasn't that great? That's what I look for, for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Um, the next question is for Ms. Bronfeld. In the past two years, Princeton Parents for Black Children has conducted Oprah requests on board communication in controversial matters. In each instance, we have found that a board member or members may have improperly used their position as a board member to advocate against the interests of black children and/or black administrators on disciplinary and personnel matters that would potentially come before them. In a public meeting, a current board member criticized Princeton uh, parents uh, for black children's um, for exercising their right to file an Oprah request. Do you believe that the PPBC should not exercise its legal right to obtain public information through Oprah requests? And do you believe a single board member should be held responsible for PPBC's actions in advocating for our children? Ms. Bronfeld?
You know, I, I, I got you. Um, I'm gonna have to unfortunately plead the fifth here because there's a little information that you just shared. You know, that came from a, a closed meeting. And I'm a little insulted right now. So I, I need to plead the fifth here. I'm
Okay. Well, my apologies. Okay. Um, just anybody else, would anybody else like to take that question?
I mean, I'll just say, you know, our communications are subject to disclosure. And I, I think we, we should all be aware of that when we communicate. And uh, you know, the law allows those, those communications to be um, you know, disclosed and, and you know, I'm a lawyer as well. So I support that. And I think it's something that um, you know, we all are aware or become aware as we serve uh, in a public role.
Can I say something?
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you, um, Ms. Kendall. Sure, Ms. Wu?
That also show me that's another uh, BOE failed as black students. I hope this will never happen again. You have to be transparency and communication. It's very important. And that is very sad that it happened. I wish it would never happen again. That is my true feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Anybody else? We'll go on to the next question. No? Okay. The next question is-
I'll give a rebuttal on that. Um, I just want to share that I feel a little attacked with this question. So I just, now that I've had a moment to think.
Well, I, I would like to apologize upfront. There was no intent to attack any of our candidates. I think we were trying to explore issues to ensure that we have full transparency and some, this was a moment to add, give some clarity to issues, I think. So I received the questions and I, I asked the questions. So please, the floor is yours.
That, that's all I'm saying. I, I feel attacked with this question.
Okay, so I will apologize um, on behalf of everyone here. The intent was not to attack anyone. We appreciate everyone's participation. So, okay. We'll move on to the next question. Um, the next question is for Ms. Kendall and Ms. Cantor. Our understanding is that students of color in this, in this district are subjected to harsher formal and informal disciplinary measures than white students. This includes in-school and out-of-school suspensions, detention, expulsion, and even referral to police or law enforcement. As you know, black students are most likely to be referred to the police for the type and level of incidents which white children are not referred. What is or should be the district's policy for referral of disciplinary matters to law enforcement? Is this the best policy for a school district which prioritizes equity? Is there a memorandum of understanding between the district and the police? Do you know what it is? How would you change it?
So, um, this is timely.
Daphna's gonna answer first.
Also, um, is that okay? Okay, so um, we have a memorandum of understanding. I just picked it up Monday. It's 75 pages. I haven't read it. I was asked to, I, I, I was asked to sign it, but I need to read it first. Um, so I don't know what it says. I would hope, um, look, I understand that, um, you know, I've heard of situations anecdotally where um, police are called on situations where they should not be. Um, so for, for a very first step, I think what we've implemented is no one can call the police on a student unless the superintendent is aware. Because um, there have been some times where the police are called, um, that it's outrageous. Um, our school administration needs to protect the kids. And if, and, and that includes not involving law enforcement unless the only time law enforcement should be called is if there is a danger, a clear and present danger to the health or safe and safety of another living human being. That is it. That should be the standard. Other than that, call the superintendent first and she should be made aware of the situation and whether or not the police have to be called. Because unless you have clear objective criteria, it's a very subjective thing. And we all know in society that black and brown kids are subjected to very different outcomes when they are um, in front of law enforcement than um, you know, their white peers. And, and so that's what we have to do. So um, I would think the MOU is going to be a boilerplate um, and basically does not give the police any authority to enter our schools without the permission of the superintendent. And if it says anything other than that, then we're gonna have to make some revisions.
So I will, of course, um, second what Daphna just said. Um, I knew, I had asked her if, if she had received this and she had just received the 75 pages. I will not comment on the memorandum of understanding. But you know, the other thing uh, besides the calling of the police, which I agree with everything Daphna said, was, you know, our district is, has been stating that it's putting in restorative practices for, for years. And they really, it just really hasn't come to fruition in the way that we would all like. So I think a focus in the next uh, you know, for the next uh, several months and years is to ensure and give Dr. Kelly and her staff all the tools to ensure that restorative practices are truly being used in our schools. Because we, we have received the Times reports that they're really not. And that, as Dr. Kelly has both taught us and stated, there needs to be a lot of background work. You can't just pop in and say restorative. You have to have set a culture that's ready for that kind of work. So I believe that's also something our district needs to uh, focus on. And it's something that our board could um, help the district prioritize.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Um, Ms. Bronfeld? Um, this question is for you. As a dis- uh, are you as a district leader prepared to make budgetary decisions which will enhance the opportunities of children who will not go to four and two-year colleges upon graduation? More specifically, what role do you see vocational and job preparedness training in the education of our young adults, particularly in this district, which historically measures its success by what colleges its children attend?
So I 100% believe that if we have students that this is their passion to go to vocational school, that we need to support it. Um, I had said before, we do have a program with the Mercer County Technical School where you go to PHS in the morning and then the technical school in the afternoon or vice versa. What I would want us to do is to do a survey and see how many students even in our district are interested in this. Because maybe they don't want to do the travel, you know, for whatever reason. And, and if it is a number, you know, that we, if, if there is a high percentage of students who want to do it, then we should be bringing this in-house. And I would financially support that. Um, you know, we'd have to get different staff in different rooms and things. But if this is what our students need to get that free equitable high school degree, then that is what I will support for them. Um, I'm not a big person who touts where people go to college to say, this is why you should come to Princeton. My fellow um, board members know that. Every child's gonna do what they're gonna do when they go off to college. And, and, and it's what they're gonna want and what they're gonna do. And the name of the school is not always gonna be what's gonna get you, you know, your job, your ticket to life, whatever it is. But I completely support if students want to go into vocational. And you know, some kids really don't know in the beginning what they want. And, and maybe they think they want to be a journalist or they, they, you know, they want to do chemistry. But if this is, you know, vocational then becomes their passion and what they want, I think it's great and I will 100% support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bronfeld. And this is the final question, and I will ask it of all the candidates. The district's track record for retention of black professionals is abysmal. What do you plan to do to help retain these black professionals and provide them the, the support they need to do their jobs in this district? Where many parents are focused on the perceived needs of the individual children and are prone to judge others by the color of their skin. And we will start with you, Ms. Bronfeld.
Sure. Um, as a member of personnel and also the chair, I know the district needs to do a much better job of hiring, training and retaining our diverse staff. This has been a goal for the board and shared with the district leadership. I didn't know how, I did not know how hard it was for black professionals to work in Princeton until I heard them share this at a meeting. Many also shared their stories in the equity audit, which for me was really sad and hard to read. Princeton is a diverse community and it is sad how our educators do not feel supported in their jobs here in Princeton. I don't have all the answers for this. I want to hear what Dr. Kelly and Dr. Two suggest to ensure all, especially our black educators, will continue to stay and teach in Princeton. And as a board member, I will support what it takes to ensure excellent black educators feel supported and especially respected in their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bronfeld. Ms. Cantor?
Um, I too don't have a, because, but one of the things I know we've been trying to do is create time and space for black educators to connect and cross and across buildings so that they can discuss their um, you know, their mutual difficulties and provide supports when they don't uh, when they may not feel that um, they are being supported and accepted enough. So, so to providing that time and space and then um, providing opportunities to work with district leadership to to have have them give, you know, feedback onto things that could be done by the district. But we as a board, you know, support having a diverse staff. But having a diverse staff means meaning making an investment into that staff. And I think we have to make sure that we're really doing that second part and and not just saying, oh, we hired you and patting ourselves on the back. But met doing measurables, how long is someone here? How happy are there? Are they, are they accepted by, uh, their fellow, uh, staff members? And do they feel they have the right mentorship? So I think all those things are things a board could do to support the district.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Cantor, oh, I'm sorry, I just did, Ms. Kendall.
Right, thanks. So I guess, you know, that question is is very sobering and I and I have to tell you. So, um, I think we were all, the three board members, we were all on the committee that hired Dr. Kelly. And, you know, I I think often now that I didn't understand what it meant to you know, we hired Dr. Kelly because she was the most qualifier out of all the candidates. But it never occurred to me what she would encounter, but I think she knew. But for me, it's been, um, it it's been like what I didn't know, you know, they say you don't know what you don't know. Well, I didn't know. And in the spring, um, when there was all this hubble blue about certain things, you know, there was a petition and there were some very, very, very racist comments. And, um, you know, it didn't need to go there. You can have your opinion, you can disagree, but you have to keep it civil. And and what I did at the board meeting as the president is, as I said, look, you know, we can disagree, but it's not acceptable. Um, and so and I'll just continue to do that. Um, because I I believe that we're better than that. And I don't, I think it's a small minority of people who who judge someone by the color of their skin. I would like to think that by the color of their skin, um, but it's not acceptable. And, you know, I think the board, you know, I don't think there was one board member who who didn't think that there wasn't racism, uh, this spring. I'm gonna need more time next.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Ms. Wu, you have the final, uh, uh, response for tonight.
I'm very sorry to hear that because, you know, the uh, difficult to retain a Black professional in Princeton School District. I would think that probably they don't think this is a friendly environment, hostile. So I suggest always have a communication. Even the board member should, you know, from time to time, ask all the teacher how they feel so we can have a feedback. So we know how they feel working in this district. So communication is still a key word. I think talked out, we can find a solution. I I hope we can keep any kind of professional, especially Black. Because that is, it's very disappointed that twenty-first century that we cannot even keep a good teacher or good employee in this district. And I would try my best to improve that. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Well, actually, Ms. Wu, you have sixty seconds. You can make a final statement. Each of the candidates will have sixty seconds to make a final statement. So we'll start with you, Ms. Wu.
Thank you. I, as I said before, that I decide to run, it's because I want to help my community. And don't get me wrong, it's Princeton community. Never, especially a a small group, uh, racial group, no. I consider I live in this town and I want to help and I can, you know, uh, improve the, uh, quality of education. That's reason I'm running and I'm asking for support. And thank you very much for the, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Ms. Kendall?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Caroline and Mary, for running a very smooth forum tonight. I appreciate it. So I just want to say I'm committed to ensuring that children of color have a more equitable experience in the Princeton Public Schools. And if we elected, I'll, I will continue to work to ensure that that happens, that the discipline of Black and Brown students continues to decline and that there's more representation of Black and Brown students in higher level courses. It's it's not easy work and we need your support to make change. So I thank you for hosting this forum tonight. And thank you to your commitment to the, uh, to the children of color in the Princeton Public Schools. I think the district has implemented many changes that had made our school district better and our children more cared for. But there's work to be done. And I know I can continue to help to bring about further changes. Princeton Public Schools has moved beyond repeatedly saying inclusion and equity. And we've taken concrete steps, including hiring a new supervisor for elementary education. This administrative position is truly our first to focus on closing the achievement gap. So thank you again, and I humbly ask for your support in the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall, Ms. Cantor?
I also would like to, um, thank you for hosting, um, tonight. The questions, uh, certainly the list of questions you gave us certainly gave us a lot to think about uh, in preparation for coming here. Um, one of the reasons I chose to rat and to run three years ago was because of student experience that programs like the MCN See Me Hear Me, um, showed that our students um, needed a place where their voice was heard and then a board and a administration that could help make changes that were tangible to those students. Um, I feel, um, as a board member so far in my first term, although much of it dominated by the pandemic, that we are on the road to start making these measurable changes. And that is something that, uh, when we were looking for a new superintendent that I was most excited about with Dr. Kelly and that she believes in measurable strategies, goals. And that's something that I think our district needs. We need to be held accountable to make these changes. So so I too ask for your support for, um, a second term. And student experience is, I think, the most important thing we can focus on.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Ms. Bronfeld, you have the final word.
Thank you. Um, I love being on the school board and as a product of public education, I know that education is the tool to move everyone forward. There's been a lot of talk about the current board being status quo and not caring about real education. I strongly support what some call real education. And I strongly support extracurriculars, sports, the arts, humanities, science, really anything that gets a child excited to learn. Because we know every child learns differently and has different subjects and activities they are interested in, we want to offer so many. We are not a cookie cutter district. We are diverse socially-economic district with passionate families, community members, and educators who all want the best for our students at PPS. I want to thank the Princeton Parents of Black Children for hosting this forum. And early voting starts Saturday, the twenty-ninth to Sunday, November sixth. Thank you.
Thank you all for graciously participating in the Princeton Public School Board of Education Forum tonight. Thank you to Mary and Ronald and the Princeton Parents for Black Children who organized this event. And to the Princeton Public School Board of Education candidates who made it a priority to be here tonight and participated in this spirited and important debate. I am grateful to be of service to this community and I thank you all for being here. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.